I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, May 20th regular session of the Carmel Clay Board of Trustees. Tonight, in addition to our regular business meeting, we have multiple recognitions. I want to thank the students, families and staff in joining us in celebrating these achievements. Ms. Nowles, will you please take our role?
Yes, three board members are present and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Please now stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move to our presentation portion of tonight's meeting. After each presentation, we will pause for a photo. When all of the presentations are completed, we'll take a short break to allow everyone who is hard at work studying for finals to go home and get a good night's rest. We will then continue to the business portion of our meeting. Dr. Bearsford? Dr. Bearsford will be presenting the Stephen A. Becker Carmel Clay Schools Teacher of the Year and the Support Staff Member of the Year. Dr. Bearsford.
Thank you very much. Our Teacher of the Year was announced just recently and Amanda Dillon from Prairie Trace Elementary is our 2019 Carmel Clay Schools Teacher of the Year. Amanda, would you stand, please?[113.14][113.14](Applause) Now, I'd like to give a really lengthy speech about her, but I think a picture just paints a thousand worlds. Amanda, I'll let you watch this and sit down with your hubby there for a minute, but I want you guys to get an idea of why Amanda was chosen as the Teacher of the Year.
Amanda's been here at Prairie Trace since the school opened. She's just part of our family. She's very caring, she's very loving, always has a positive attitude, is the first one to tell you good morning in the workroom. She is the first one to put a card on your desk on your birthday. She actually gives me chocolate chip cookies from McDonald's on my birthday over here.
To me, Amanda is the absolute picture of a kindergarten teacher. She's able to relate to the kids at their level, but still requires, you know, a lot of them. She pushes them to be their best.
Her heart is so big and so giving and so loving, and she spreads that love everywhere she goes. So, her students not only see the love she has for other people, but it really instills a really good foundation for them to become a loving person.
If someone had asked me, "Which one of your teachers do you think should be Teacher of the Year?", she'd definitely come to mind, thinking about that, because she, like every single time I would think about her, it's just a smile. Like, I've never thought of her ever in a negative way. She was so happy and I would see her in the hallways, even now, if I ever see her, she's all smiley and happy and she'll give me a hug and she asks me how I'm doing and it still feels like she cares about me, even though I'm not her student anymore.
Mrs. Dillon teaches me a lot of things: reading, writing, science, social studies. She is, like, so smart. I think she's the best teacher in America.
She teaches me how to be a good friend and how to be kind.
Kindergarten isn't scary, 'cause Mrs. Dillon makes school fun.
So, if you walk into Amanda's classroom, you're definitely going to notice bears. The thing about Amanda is that she's always had her classroom named Bearsville. Bearsville is a community and a world that Mrs. Dillon created, and it was a way of building community with very young children that were starting school for the first time, and it was a way to bring a collection of teddy bears together of different sizes and shapes and colors and backgrounds, just like our own kindergarten class.
I definitely remember Bearsville. It was a really big part of her class there. Bears everywhere, and it kind of just reminds you of the person she is and how comforting her room is. It's just a great memory that I have from being in her class.
Amanda, I just want to let you know that your Prairie Trace family is incredibly proud of you. We are amazed at the amount of love and excellent teaching that you have shared with so many families and students over the years. You've created incredible relationships with your peers, and we're so incredibly proud of you, and we love you and care about you very much.[318.44][318.44](Applause)
Mrs. Dillon is the best teacher, because she let us play on the first grade playground, even though we were in kindergarten.[333.41][333.41](Laughter)
Please help me in welcoming Amanda Dillon, our Teacher of the Year.[345.03][345.03](Applause) So, I'm gonna ignore that whole thing about the kindergartners getting to be on the first grade playground.[368.44][368.44](Laughter) But before I let you go, I want you to know that I received seven persuasive paragraphs from several kids from Bearsville, and they were asking me if I could read a book at Bearsville, because we would find a bear book, because your name is Bears Ford.[388.03][388.03](Laughter) It says, "Can you please wear a bowtie with bears, please? Because your name is Dr. Bears Ford, and we're Bearsville." That was Vivian. It says, "Can we please have a half-day of school, please? Because I'm sleepy."[406.00][406.00](Laughter) That was from Hadley. And I gotta tell ya, I get that.[411.19][411.19](Laughter) That says, "I think you should read a story. It would be great to honor Bearsville." Oh, that's good. And it says, "We love stories. Can you read us a story? And can you wear bears, a bear clothes? Like, bear clothes?"[428.22][428.22](Laughter) So, I'm thinking I gotta dress up like a bear?[431.12][431.12](Laughter) Yeah, I think that's where it's going. Kate wanted me to do that one. And it said, "Will you come to our classroom? We want you to read us a book. It will be fun." And this one says, "Can you dress up as a bear and read a book to us? Because your name is..." You get the idea, right?[450.53][450.53](Laughter) So, I just want you to know that I absolutely will come to Bearsville and read a book about bears, because my name is Bears Ford.[459.62][459.62](Laughter) One of the really cool things you get to do when you're superintendent is just recognize excellence, and you just witnessed part of that. But we also gave away another award this last week, and it was the award for our Support Staff Worker of the Year. And I want to bring Kevin Deloach to the podium right now. Kevin, will you pop up here? And welcome, Kevin, our support staff.[531.82][531.82](Applause) Just kinda work your way through that crowd, Kevin.[543.54][543.54](Laughter) Now, I want to tell you some special things about Kevin. To begin with, he had 55 nominations for, to be the Support Staff Member of the Year. Fifty-five. And the really incredible part about these recommendations was the majority of them were by students. And I got to read a bunch of them. I was reading through them, and the themes that came out in these was that the number-one theme that came out on almost every recommendation was, "Kevin knows our names." Kevin works very hard. As a matter of fact, he gets the front doors of Clay so clean that I almost walked through and broke my nose, because it doesn't look like there's a door there. I told him that on a couple of occasions, to leave it smudged a little bit, so I could tell. But the kids talk about Kevin with full hearts. They said, "He knows our names. He asks us how we're doing. If we're not doing okay, he asks why and can I help you." He is funny. He makes them laugh. He engages kids in the middle school, and I don't know if you guys know much about middle school. I refer to it as the hormone zone.[609.54][609.54](Laughter) And kids are really, you know, their feet are too big and there's a lot of different things going on in their bodies, and it really takes a special person to connect with middle school kids, and that's what Kevin does. And so, we always talk about our team, that every kid, every person in our team can make a difference in the life of a kid, in the life of a child. And Kevin is a perfect example of that, a guy that makes that happen every day. And when we announced that Kevin was the winner for Carmel Clay Schools and the whole district, the whole school just cheered. Kids in every classroom, they put it on live stream, and there was just this cheering going on, and kids were out going, just bananas over it. So, Kevin, it's my pleasure to give you this certificate, but I also have a little gift here. I'll let you open this at home, but I can guarantee you're really gonna like what's in that envelope.
No more cheese?
No cheese, no sausage. This is good stuff.[666.04][666.04](Laughter)
Thank you so much. I just want to say, as a daughter of a teacher and of a middle school custodian, not only do you touch the lives of students, but of your family, so thank you. Next, I would like to invite Dr. Amy Dudley to come present our Young Artist Awards.
Well, good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize our young artists, and we're very excited that for the next six months, we have the work of our young artists back here on our board meeting wall, so we can enjoy that when we have our meetings in here, and we do have a lot of different meetings. So, we're very excited that our young artists really decorate this for us. But first, before we recognize our young artists, if you are one of our art teachers, if you could please stand to be recognized.[786.04][786.04](Applause) And thank you to the fabulous work that our art teachers do day in and day out to really help our students to shine and to work with their creativity to make such meaningful artwork. You know, many times, art class is one class where a student, maybe the student is not the best at math or whatever, but they really can shine maybe in art class, and our teachers there embrace that and really help our students to create wonderful work. So, we're very appreciative of our teachers. So, to start with our young artists, if, once I call your name, if you will come up and you'll get an award from Dr. Bearsford, and then you can go over here and you can shake our board members' hands, and then you stay right up here at the podium, and we'll take your picture when you're all finished. So, our first young artist is Rachel Comer. She's a fifth-grade student at Carmel Elementary.[850.04][850.04](Applause) Alexis Carter is a 10th-grade student at Carmel High School.[866.04][866.04](Applause) Abigail Wilson, a 7th-grade student at Carmel Middle School.[876.82][876.82](Applause) Brett Bupp, a 5th-grade student at Cherry Tree Elementary.[889.32][889.32](Applause) Samantha Lynn, a 7th-grade student at Clay Middle School.[900.04][900.04](Applause) Berkeley Taylor, a 1st-grade student at College Wood.[915.25][915.25](Applause) Cameron Walker, a 7th-grade student at Creekside Middle School.[932.04][932.04](Applause) Hannah Williams, a 5th-grade student at Forestale Elementary.[948.12][948.12](Applause) Ava Loy, a kindergarten student at Mohawk Trails.[958.82][958.82](Applause) Ella Liu, a 4th-grade student at Orchard Park.[972.25][972.25](Applause) Tin Zhou, a 3rd-grade student at Prairie Trace.[986.62][986.62](Applause) Winnie Owens, a 5th-grade student at Smoky Row.[998.12][998.12](Applause) Navah Shaw, a 4th-grade student at Town Meadow.[1007.82][1007.82](Applause) Amelia Buckner, a 1st-grade student at West Clay.[1024.32][1024.32](Applause) Anna Strines, a 5th-grade student at Woodbrook Elementary.[1036.25][1036.25](Applause)
I would now like to introduce Mr. Joshua Shelton for DECA.[1169.32][1169.32](Laughter)
All right, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Bee and the Board, for having us this evening, once again. We enjoy coming, as always. I'd like to start off by saying thank you to Mrs. Cardeman, Mr. Holman, and Mr. Browning, the other advisors, who were instrumental in our success this year. And then also, too, you know, we can't go without thanking Mr. Reed as well. He's a big part of the success. So, first of all, this is my first year in the district. I didn't expect to take over this role, but when I was blessed to have the opportunity, you know, it caught me by surprise as to the level of success that we've had throughout the last few years and just, and also, too, the size of our chapter. And so, a lot of people ask me, "What's the best part of your job or being at Carmel High School?". And a lot of people think that the answer's gonna be because of the success that we have. And it is true, we do have a lot of success. But it's truly the kids and the dedication and the commitment and the work ethic that our children have. And, you know, there's a lot of nights where our kids are up till 12, 1 o'clock at night, studying, doing projects, working on their presentations, and it's, you only get to see the end product. You don't get to see everything that goes into it. And so, I just want to commend all of you and say congratulations to all of our kids that participate in the DECA program, because it truly is a phenomenal program, and it's owed all to you.[1292.04][1292.04](Applause) So, at this time, I'd like to introduce our President, Thomas Jevlich, and our Vice President, Reagan Marklin, and she's, they're gonna help me with recognizing our students. And I want to say thank you to the two of them for the work that they've done this year. For those of you that are not familiar with DECA, it is a student-run business organization, and quite frankly, these two have gone above and beyond what I could have ever imagined would be possible for two high school students. And so, they are phenomenal, and the work that they've done this year is just incredible. And so, I just want to say thank you for that and also for helping me through this Okay, so with no further ado, I'm gonna let them take over the mic and introduce our students.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, thank you all for being here. Thank you for letting us have a chance to recognize our Carmel DECA students. We are very, very proud of the hard work that they have put in. Just to give you a little bit of background information, Carmel DECA has about 500 students in it, so it makes it one of the largest clubs at Carmel High School, and we are currently one of the most successful in written events, as well as role plays, as we're working towards that. My name is Thomas Jevlich. I'm currently serving as the Carmel DECA President, and as we go through, we're gonna be covering the finalists that made it at the international competition tonight.
And as Mr. Shelton mentioned earlier, my name is Reagan Marklin, and this year I had the pleasure of serving as the Executive Vice President of Carmel DECA. We've been really proud of our chapter throughout this year. We've actually had over 70 students participating in leadership roles among those 500 that were in the club as a whole. And so, while this year we have had a lot of successes, not come without its challenges. These have taken a lot to work through, but we're truly for the better and for the strength of the program. Everything from our district event being snowed out to changing advisors, which Mr. Shelton did a fantastic job of taking over, but obviously, that comes with challenges in and of itself. So, in spite of all of that, we're very proud of everything that our chapter was able to succeed in, and would like to formally recognize specifically our finalists, which means they are top 20 in the entire world within DECA competition.[1452.32][1452.32](Applause) So, DECA students, whenever you hear your group's name called, it will be by your group that you competed in, please go ahead and come forward. So, first, we have, in the Virtual Business Challenge Hotel Management, Sujih Prakash
Next up, in Business Finance, we have Nathan Mylum.[1484.32][1484.32](Applause)
In the Integrated Marketing Campaign Event, Lisa Warren and Lena Wasim.[1495.94][1495.94](Applause)
In Hotel and Lodging Management, Tara Kunduli.[1504.82][1504.82](Applause)
In the Franchise Business Plan, Max Hurwitz, Max Himmelstein, and Michael Rector.[1516.54][1516.54](Applause)
In Financial Literacy Promotion Project, we have Lorraine Lee and Amy Tain.[1527.75][1527.75](Applause)
In the Financial Operations Research Event, we have Bryce Hole and Vivek Patel.[1540.04][1540.04](Applause)
In Hospitality and Tourism Operations Research, we have Daniel Tajworth, Nikhil Patel, and
In the Sports and Entertainment Marketing Operations Event, we have Connor Wimhoff, Meredith Lips, and Riley Hannan.[1567.32][1567.32](Applause)
Finally, in Hospitality Team Decision Making, we have Maddie Heath and Samantha Montgomery.[1578.82][1578.82](Applause)
All right, and then in the Entrepreneurship Promotion Project, Reagan Marklin, Thomas
So, before we take the picture, I just want to recognize two distinguished groups. In DECA, it breaks it down from top 20, top 10, and then there's something called the top three in the world, which are recognized as World Champions. This year, Carmel DECA was honored to have two groups become World Champions, so if the following groups could take a step forward, just so that we could give them a round of applause. Financial Operations Research, Bryce Hole and Vivek Patel.[1666.82][1666.82](Applause)
I'd now like to introduce Ms. Brittany Wiseman for the Carmel Tech Hounds 2019 Indiana First Robotics State Champions.[1788.54][1788.54](Applause)
Good evening. I have to say, just because I have the mic, too, that I'm very proud of our DECA program. They all did-
They all did such a fabulous job. And I have to tell you, when you take that many students out of state to Florida, right next to Universal Studios, you cross your fingers and hope everything goes okay, and they're absolutely perfect. And they represented us so well. So, congratulations to all of you parents for instilling them those morals and values and characters that they displayed. So, thank you so much. Now, moving on to another stellar group that we have at Carmel High School, Techhounds. Techhounds work so hard. They basically live at the school, and they create the absolute coolest thing ever, a robot. And so, our Techhounds compete in the first robotics competition. And what happens is, in January, they're given a prompt. So, they're given something that they're required to do with their robot. And our students, there's over 100 students, they only have a short amount of time that they can actually build the robot. They create a whole stage that, I know I'm probably saying that wrong, but they set it up in the cafeteria to see if the robot can actually do what it's supposed to do. And they're constantly working with professionals in the community, and they're tweaking that all the time. And also, what they're doing is they're also promoting STEM. And so, I even brought my son tonight, because I think it's so important for him to see how amazing these students are. They're trying to, they do women in STEM. They just really try to make sure the community knows how important STEM is. And so, we didn't have all 100 here, but we do have the leaders. So, when I call your name, if you could come up here, that'd be greatly appreciated. And I also want to say, they did represent Carmel High School and Indiana at the world championship in Detroit. And I know they didn't do well as they thought they were going to do, but I have to say, I thought they did fantastic, and they represented us so well. And they're constantly learning and changing things, so they should be very proud of themselves. So, the following students represent our 100-plus group of Techhounds. So, we have Priya Una. Armon Goyle. Aryan Indu, I'm going to say it wrong, Induapu? You know what, Aryan, you're very important. Either way, very important part of the team. I probably said his name seven times already this year, every time, I say it differently. Ryan Forrest. And Bryce Castle. And this definitely cannot have been done without their wonderful sponsor, Mr. Zach Bonowitz. And also Laura Early. Zach works tirelessly with these students. He's in there bright and early, every SOT on the weekends. I saw him setting up shop in the transportation. They were eating pizza around all the motors. I don't know if that's what I would call fun, but they enjoyed it. But he just puts in so much time, and we're so lucky to have his dedication. So, congratulations, Techhounds.
Good evening, and thank you to the school board and superintendent for allowing me this opportunity to recognize some outstanding journalism students. My name is Jim Streisel, and I'm the advisor of the Highlight News Magazine and the Highlight Online Website at Carmel High School. I'm honored tonight to recognize the students who are part of both of these nationally-recognized news outlets. This past fall, the print version of the Highlight was named a Pacemaker Award winner by the National Scholastic Press Association. The NSPA Pacemaker is often called the Pulitzer Prize of scholastic journalism, as it recognizes journalistic best of the best in the entire nation. The Highlight was one of only 28 news publications and the only publication in Indiana to earn a Pacemaker. To add to that accomplishment, just last month, the NSPA awarded its online Pacemaker Awards at its annual convention. The Highlight Online Website was one of only 18 total winners from around the country, and again, the only winner in Indiana. To earn just one Pacemaker is quite an accomplishment for a news staff. A Pacemaker represents consistent high quality in content, photography, design, and adherence to journalistic principles of accuracy and integrity. With that in mind, this year's print Pacemaker is the seventh consecutive Pacemaker Award for the Highlight staff. On the online side, this year's online Pacemaker is the staff's third consecutive award and the 10th overall online Pacemaker since the award's inception in 1996. Tonight, I'm privileged to recognize the seniors who comprise this year's Highlight Management Team, who will accept recognition on behalf of the entire 80-member Highlight staff. Those seniors are as follows. Emily Dexter. And this year's editor-in-chief, Carson Turbush.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming tonight to celebrate so many amazing students. My name is Nicole Lowry. I'm the Pinnacle Yearbook Advisor at Carmel High School. And we are actually here to celebrate and honor that last year's yearbook staff won, because judging for yearbooks unfortunately runs on a delayed schedule due to publication requirements from across the country and throughout the state. Because of that, we celebrate the 2018 Pinnacle Yearbook, which was honored by the Indiana High School Press Association with a Hoosier Star Award, which is akin to a state championship, as you might think of it, for sports. This is not without effort. This is something that last year's staff of nearly 70 students worked day in and day out tirelessly on to capture and collect the memories of our school year. The staff this year is doing the same, has done the same, and hopefully, our students will see that this week as yearbooks distribute. Last year's editors-in-chief were unable to join us. Andrew He and Kaylee Ramey are wrapping up their first year of college, respectively, at Duke University and the University of Kentucky. So, lots to be proud of there. But here to accept the honor on their behalf are this year's editors-in-chief, Abigail Carmichael and Charles Hunter. They would also like to take this opportunity to present Dr. Beresford and the board with copies of this year's yearbook, which were just released today.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's lovely to be back again. Thank you to the board and Dr. Beresford for inviting us. I would also like to thank Mo Borto and Terry Ramos for the incredible support they've given to our young broadcasters in allowing us to get up to all kinds of nonsense in the pursuit of fantastic radio. But I think they're very proud of the work the kids have produced. This year, we have competed in state championships and national championships. We've done very well. Not everybody can be here tonight, so I will read out the names of people who are here. If I've somehow missed you, and I don't call you out, can you wave frantically so you don't miss your chance to shake Dr. Beresford's hand? It's very important. Anyway, so first of all, I'll do the state championships, and these are all first places. The person who won the on-air personality was Connor Inskeep. The best interview in the state this year was taken, was organized by Jashna Sivukumar. Fantastic. Jashna's done many fantastic interviews, but this particular award-winning one was with Dr. Beresford, so we should give him another round of applause for that as well. One of the things the team do really well, their sports broadcast. And we won the award for the best sports broadcast. It's a big team of people. Most of them are here tonight. Ethan DeRamo. And Sam Wechsler. Now, I need to say a little bit about Sam. He's the sports manager, and he's the driving force between so many of the fantastic broadcasts. Sam has actually managed to get up to 185 sports broadcasts in his three years, which is extraordinary. Sam also won two individual national awards for play-by-play in hockey and in soccer. So, very well done, Sam. The rest of the awards are for the national championships, which took place in New York. And we've got a number of people who won those events. We have Ross Abdella, who has won another award. He won Best Music Program. He won two awards, one for his Twitter and another for Social Media Manager. Very fair, talented. One of his partners, Bailey Wright, was also on the team, won the Best Music Award. Bailey also has won the award for Best Use of Video in Radio, which sounds a bit topsy-turvy. But his incredible work has attracted a lot of people to the website and his Twitter feeds. All his videos get upwards of 5,000 hits every time, so it's a fantastic asset to the radio station. And they're joined by Nate Miller, who is also part of the Best Music Award. And Nate has also won two individual awards for his promo work, both individual promo and also Best Series of Promos for the station. We have Jace Deary for Best Play-by-Play in Softball. He actually won this award with Jack Edwards, but Jack Edwards can't be here tonight, because of course, he is doing the play-by-play for the regionals in softball tonight. So, that's for Jack Edwards. And I think the last person we have here tonight is Caitlin Varanka, who won the award for the Best Comedy Show. And I can see there is one more here as well. Ryan Dossi, at the back, not waving at me. Ryan Dossi has possibly got the most competitive, actually, of the awards. Every station makes students read news. It's incredibly difficult, but Ryan has won possibly the most overpopulated award, the Best Newscaster of the Year. Very well done, Ryan. I can't see anybody waving at me, so I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Mr. James, International Broadcast Systems.
I just wanted to personally thank Dr. Beresford for coming on the broadcast on last Wednesday for baseball. And we talked about Cubs and all kinds of other stuff, and it was a lot of fun to have him on the broadcast. So, thank you, Dr. Beresford.
Can we do both of them? Okay, and we're good? Okay. Mr. Eric Marty, CHTV Indiana Association of School Broadcasters. You don't look like Eric.
I know. I like to think I'm a lot prettier, but Eric couldn't be here, nor could the CHTV student, Tyler Young. But I just wanted to recognize him very quickly. Tyler took first place in the IASB, Indiana Association of School Broadcasters Conference for in-depth video category. He's only a sophomore, so it's a particularly impressive accomplishment, as he was competing against many upperclassmen in the most heavily-entered categories of the competition. The judges gave Tyler praise for the professional video quality and masterful storytelling in the project. So, I definitely wanted to recognize Tyler, because I think he has a concert of some sort tonight, so he's super involved, but I just wanted to make sure he got recognized tonight, so.
All right, we'll take a short break, and we know that you are going home to study. And so, we wish you the best, and thank you for joining us. Yeah, you can take pictures, too.
All right, pose for your mama. Turn around. Sorry, I'm bossy.
Sorry, I'm bossy.
Yeah, I'd love to get one.
All right, let's do it, Rachel.
Can you get one?
Yeah. Do you want me to get one with you guys?
Oh, sure.
Now, does your dad have your eyes, or do you have your dad's eyes?
I have my grandfather's.
I was gonna say, because your mom's eyes are dark.
Yes.
Okay, is there a password on this or no?
Oh, yes.
That's okay.
That's funny you did that.
Okay. First, I thought it was mine. My phone, I think we have the same phone. Rachel, smile. There we go. Beautiful, beautiful. It's beautiful. You want one?
She wants one.
Yeah. Rachel, let me get one with you in the second class. She's like, "Okay, all right, go, I'm done." All righty, got it. Thank you for coming. I'm so glad you came.
Very first.
I know. And you're more messed up than I am. I haven't been home yet, but that's okay, right? Did you like it? And you'll get this back. It'll be a little tricky because she'll be in middle school because it'll stay up for six months. Usually what they do is they send it straight to you because I give your address, but they might not. They might send it to me and I might email you or something, okay? But usually that's what they do. So if you move, let it down.
Okay.
Yeah, I know.
All right, thank you. We are so proud of all of our students. Next, we will have public comment. Those wishing to participate in public comment will have three minutes to share their comments. The time will start when you begin, and the yellow light will come on, you have 30 seconds remaining. Comments should be addressed to the presiding officer, and no person may address or question individual board members. When I call your name, please approach the podium and begin by stating your name and address. Kathy Stromecki.
Thank you. I'm Kathy Stromecki. I live at 705 Hawthorne Drive. We built the house 42 years ago. I've had... They could probably hear me without it. Let's just start again. Hi, I'm Kathy Stromecki. My address is 705 Hawthorne Drive. We built the house 42 years ago. I've had two children graduate from Carmel High School. I have a granddaughter who's a sophomore at Carmel High School, and I have a grandson who will be going to Carmel High School in the fall. My concern that has come up in previous occasions, but I really need to address it again, it's the issue of e-learning. When there is a school day, a snow day, I'm sorry, a snow day, either the school is canceled or to make up that time that has been canceled, additional time is added to the school day. I think that some of our issues could be resolved by having an e-learning day like many of the schools in the area have. I know this has come up before, and it seems not to be addressed over and over again. My other issues I'm concerned about is the use of college final exam schedules. College students usually reside on campus so they can walk to their finals. If not, there's some transportation that they can use to get to the schools where they are. Also, there is, you know, some of them drive to the campus, but here, our students have this college schedule for finals that they really are not on campus, so that means a parent has to drive or someone has to drive them, or else they try to use Uber or Lyft for those times because they are not full days. They're scattered here and there, and I know the library provides some early morning access to that. The last thing I have is the late start on Gold Wednesdays. This, again, is a problem because the kids can take the bus, but then what do they do? They go and they go to Square Donuts, or they go to all of the other areas' business, and this is aggravating to the business owners because the kids are essentially loitering around. So I'm really kind of concerned that we make that, instead of a late start, put it at the end of the day, or get a regular time, and have the teachers meet at the end of the day like they did years ago. I'm through. Thank you very much for your time and patience.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. We will now move to consent. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent items? Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. At this time, I need a motion to suspend the regular board meeting and open a consolidated public hearing regarding a lease between the Carmel 2002 Building Corporation and the school district, an additional appropriation of $64,645,000 out of the proceeds of the bonds issued by the building corporation. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I would like to open a public hearing. Do I have a second? Or a motion? Oh, okay, well, then I'm good. All right, Mr. McMichael, would you like to make any comments?
I would, thank you. This is part of the process to, which will ultimately result in the ability for the school board to enter into a lease with the building corporation. And so there, as you commented, there are really two issues here. One is, is to, at the last board meeting, the board adopted a resolution approving the form of the lease, and now this hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on that lease before the board takes further action. And then the second item has to do with when the bonds are sold, those funds will need to be appropriated in order to give authorization to spend the money, and so the maximum amount is just a little over 64.6 million, but that's a maximum. We don't know yet how much will be needed until we get further development on the project. And so at this time, there's, it's appropriate to give opportunity for members of the public to make any comments that they might choose to make regarding the lease or the proposed lease.
At this time, I'll offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments regarding these plans. Since there are no comments from members of the public, may I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor? Aye. Do I have a motion to re-convene the board meeting? All those in favor? Aye. All right, at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Amy Dudley for miscellaneous materials adoption.
Thank you. So this evening, I bring to you for approval a few items that we had new materials for some new courses that you approved last October that will go into action next year. So we have the Applied English 10 and the Applied Earth Life Science, and these courses are based on our content connectors for our life skills students and our FAP students, so you have materials for those courses. And we also have some changes in our IB English 11 course, our IB High Level 1 and 2, and so there was a couple consumable items that they are changing out as well in this miscellaneous adoption piece.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the miscellaneous materials adoption? Second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. At this time, the board will consider adopting a resolution confirming the lease and other actions and adopting a resolution on the additional appropriations. Do you have any further comments, Mr. McMichael?
Just that this action now is, after having given opportunity for the public to, at public hearing, to comment on both of these matters, this resolution then would result in the board proceeding with the lease as well as giving approval to move forward with it, getting approval for the additional appropriation at the state level.
Do we already have a motion? Do I hear a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? Ms. Nouse?
I would like just an explanation of the building corporation and their role in the lease and how we proceed with the building corporation and how the schools pay into the building corporation, and then eventually the schools will become ours. So if you could...
Yes, I'll be happy to comment on that. In Indiana, there's a limitation of debt that the school corporation can have directly, and so that's 2% of the assessed value, and so these projects will exceed that, and so it's common in this state to work, to, one, to form a holding corporation or a building corporation, and the sole purpose of that building corporation is, from a legal perspective, is to build the building and then lease the building back to the school corporation until the bonds are paid off, and at that point, then the title of the building goes back to the school district. So the way that works is, a holding corporation is formed, it's a separate legal entity from the school district. As I said, their sole purpose is to essentially build a building, and so that starts, or one of the things that has to happen is, is they have to own the property on which the building will be built, and so we will go through a process of having property at both Carmel Elementary as well as Clay Center Road appraised, and then the holding corporation will purchase the property, and they will do that from proceeds of the bond sale. And the school district then will turn right around and take those funds and apply them to the cost of the project. And so the lease payment then is exactly the amount of the bond payment. And so the bonds are sold, the payment schedule is determined, and then the school corporation pays as lease rental, it's referred to, the amount of those bond payments, and that continues over the life of the bonds until such times that the bonds are paid off, and at that point, the property and the building then is titled to the school corporation. So in summary, the sole purpose of the holding corporation is to provide a separate legal entity because legally, it is the holding corporation that has the debt, not the school corporation. And so that, you go through that process, and so there is no, there's no money that changes hands. The holding corporation members don't get paid. They don't in any way make any money. It's a legal process to, for a school district to build a building, at least that building until it's paid off, and then acquire the title to the building, so.
I have another question. Initially, we purchased the grounds on Clay Center Road.
That's correct.
So what happens now that we have purchased that, and now that we're building the building on Clay Center Road, and now the building corporation, will they be taking over the payments, or will they pay us for the ownership of Clay, the Clay property?
Again, from a legal perspective, the school district will essentially sell the property to the holding corporation.
Okay.
And whatever, and it'll be appraised by two independent appraisers, and it will sell for the average of those appraisals. Whatever that amount is, and it will be given to the school corporation, and every dime of that amount will be applied back to the cost of building the school. And so it becomes part of the, the funds exchange hands, but the amount of money is contributed toward the cost of the project.
So initially... We're putting in 2%.
No, we're not...
You said 2% of the amount.
No, I was, the school district's maximum limit of debt is 2% of the community's assessed value, of the school district's assessed valuation.
Which is?
Don't know off the top of my head, but this amount, for these bonds would result in us exceeding that.
Yeah, I've got that far. I was just wondering, what the 2%?
Yeah. The 2% amount? I don't recall the maximum levy off the top of my head. I'll tell you later.
I could add that all these steps, which there are a lot of, and you can tell the complexity of this and doing bond sales and construction projects in school setting in Indiana, very complex, and all this is done under the careful watch and advice of bond counsel, so, and they are meticulous about making sure we do every step and do it correctly so that we don't make any errors whatsoever with the process.
Roger, can you refresh my memory? Is the bond length, are we estimating it'll be 20 years, or how long are we...
I'm thinking 15 on these. It's not uncommon to have 20 years, but these are a little shorter than that, I believe.
Any further discussion? Will now take a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Declaration of Emergency and Quote Award, Carmel High School Emergency Repairs, Mr. McMichael.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this is in relationship to the explosion that we had at Carmel High School, and under the statute, when there's an emergency such as that, the board may declare an emergency, and we may move forward then without taking the time to formally solicit bids. And so that's what happened in this case, and so the first, the first thing that happened when the emergency first occurred is we did, we brought in contractors to do immediate necessary... is we did, we, we brought in contractors to do immediate necessary work to close up the building and, and those kinds of things. And that's outlined in, in the report. And that amount was just over $665,000. And so, so we moved as quickly as possible to do that, 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 that immediate work right after the explosion. And we did solicit, our, our construction manager and architects did solicit informal quotes for that work as well. But we proceeded to do that work and now, we're sharing that with you as a matter of, you know, confirming that that was done. And the immediate action this evening then is, is once we had the, the immediate things taken care of, we then did a more formal process of soliciting quotes to actually, you know, to do all the repairs. And so, that's what's before you now. And we had, we actually solicited from 41 different contractors and seven of those contractors responded. And so, we're recommending that the board, one, declared emergency and then also to award the quotes that are before you. And those quotes in total amount to $2,752,132. So, this is the, and all of this expense fortunately is covered by our insurance absent the $75,000 of deductible. Now, what you have before you is not the in total cost of the damage. We also have fees for architects and, and construction managers. This does not include any, any property that was damaged such, you know, in terms of furniture and things like that. And so, there will be more expense. We don't, I don't know yet, you know, what that total amount will be. But, but this is the direct cost of, for the contractors and the structure. So, we would, again, recommend that you do declare that project as, as an emergency and, and award these quotes as presented to you.
Do I hear a motion to approve the Declaration of Emergency and Quote Award for Carmel High School Emergency Repairs?
No move.
So, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Bannenberg?
Mr. McMichael?
Mm-hmm.
You had said this is not all encompassing. There are other outlined expenses that we will have.
Correct.
But regardless of what all of those other expenses are, we are still maximum $75,000 out of pocket as our deductible.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, from a financial standpoint, fortunately, the, this incident was not hugely significant as far as our direct cost.
I mean, still a chunk of change, but...
Absolutely.
All things considering.
Yeah.
And our lives were spared. That's huge.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Nouse?
Yes, can you tell me basically what JBM contractors will be doing? It just says general trades.
We've got, may get some help from the audience, but I'll give a shout at it. When we talk about general trades, that's like carpentry, drywall, as opposed to something specific like electrical or, or the mechanical systems.
So, finishing?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. McMichael, are these things that we, that will go through the insurance company or do we pay for it first and then are reimbursed?
What they do is they, we, we work very closely with the insurance company. And as they give approval, which they have, we've, we've had a very good relationship thus far. And, and what happens is that they will advance a certain amount of money. That'll be, you know, they can see that, you know, that it's going to be, you know, two or three million dollars. And so, they, they will advance money as, as we go on. So, we, so we really, we're not doing, there's a little bit of reimbursement initially because we, you know, we started right away. But, but now, it's in the swing of things. It's, it's more a matter that they, they continue to forward funds in anticipation of the claims.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Bannenberg?
Mr. McMichael, could you speak to the timing of the repairs and when the, the area will be full service to our students and staff?
May have to ask Ron, but I believe that it's what we're getting near the, in August or September. August.
Ms. Nouse?
Yes, just one, I don't see the boilers on here. So, is that, are those repairs already done or are they in, as part of this?
They're, they're down at the bottom. That was some of the immediate work that we did.
The 665?
Yes.
So, we don't need to do anything else with those?
No, well, I don't, a little bit, but...
They're done? Okay.
Anything further? Will now take a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Yes, if I could make just a comment, I was, Dr. Bristard reminded me that we'd really like to publicly express our appreciation for Fang and Howie and Bill Payne is in the audience this evening, as well as the Skilman Corporation. And Eli Miller is representing them this evening. Without their assistance and many other people, we really could not have had gotten this project up to the point that it is. And building back in the shape that we were able to, as you'll remember, we were able to, it was over the break, but we were able to have school the very first day back from break with really very little of the building not being available, all things considered.
Yes, I think they went above and beyond and we thank you very much for your help.
Thank you. Mr. McMichael, bid award musical instruments?
This isn't nearly as exciting as when the students were here, but I'm, I'm gonna do my best. Okay. This is a recommendation for a bid award for musical instruments to Page's Music in the amount of $1,083,174.54. We solicited bids from three different vendors. We had just one responded that met our specifications. We did have one, one of the three partially responded for, for, you know, some of the items, which was actually helpful because we also had an opportunity at least to compare that, that pricing with the pricing of Page's. And, and I will share with you that this, based on everything that we have, won the, the original estimate for the, for the cost of these instruments as well as that, some ability to compare some of the items with the one vendor that did respond. I'm very comfortable that this is very, was a very competitive pricing in spite of the fact that we didn't have other people that, to compare it to. And so, we would recommend that you award this bid. And I'd note that the, the proceeds are from the, the recent sale of the 2019 general obligation bond. And most of this equipment is going to the three middle schools. There's a little bit, about 30,000 to 40,000 is the high school, but most of it is, it's somewhat equally spread, about $325,000 to $385,000 per middle school.
Do I hear a motion to approve the bid award for musical instruments?
No move.
Any discussion? Ms. Nouse?
Yes, are there instruments that we are replacing or are we adding to what we've already got in the middle schools?
There is some adding. I don't know specifically how much, but the vast mass majority of this is, is replacement.
So, what are we doing with the old instruments then?
We traded in, as a part of this bid, we, we traded in those items that we did not need.
Oh, okay. So, that took down the, how much would that have?
$100,000.
Oh, on the second page?
Yeah, I think it's, maybe included. Relative to the cost of the new instruments, it was very minimal because by definition, these instruments were not worth very much. Otherwise, we would have, you know, kept them. But, but it was wanted. It, it did have, you know, at least some offset, but also then, it was a way to also dispose of the instruments because at some point, if, absent that, they become a liability. We don't need them, don't have a place to put them, so forth. So, it takes care of that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And Roger, what is the, the livelihood of each of these or how long do they last?
How long?
Yes?
Depends on the instruments. I think it noted in the report that a significant number of these instruments were purchased in 2005. So, answer your question, many of the instruments, they, we assume about a 15-year...
Okay.
...life. There are, there was information out there that would suggest less than that, but we do try to get, you know, as much out of them as we can.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll mount, now move on to discussion with the first reading of policy 4110, 4111.01, homeless students, Dr. Amy Dudley.
Yes, thank you. So, this is the first reading of our homeless policy. And the policy committee looked at this policy. ISBA suggested some changes due to ESAs amendments to the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. And the whole purpose of this is to make sure that our students that do find themselves homeless are, have the stability and the services that they need when they're in that situation. We want to keep it as stable as we can at school and make sure that they're provided with those services that they need. The, in the policy, we do have, and this is not a change, we have a homeless liaison and that's David Woodward, who is our homeless liaison. And this is, when the policy committee met and looked at this, they looked at the recommendations from ISBA. We reviewed our current policy and determined that many of the things in our current policy really are a better fit for administrative guidelines. And so, those pieces will go into the administrative guidelines. So, we're not going to get rid of the very specific information in the policy, but it would go under administrative guidelines because that's really more of a fit rather than being in policy.
Any discussion? Anything? Ms. Nouse?
I just wanted to remind the board that we have decided that the policies will be very general in nature and cover the law as much as possible. And then, anything specific always goes in administrative guidelines. So, that's why the policy was condensed to what it is now.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Dr. Dudley, the first reading of policy 4112, entrance requirements.
Okay, so, this policy should look familiar to you. We changed it just last year, but we've actually changed it back. This is our entrance requirements for kindergarten in first grade. And as you may have read in the media, that the entrance requirements have changed from the state legislature. The requirements actually haven't changed. The, in order to enroll in kindergarten, a student must be five by August 1st of the enrolling year. However, last year, the state legislature said that if it wasn't August 1st, if they weren't five by August 1st, we would not receive ADM money for the students after August 1st. So, we went and changed it, that it had to be August 1st and there was no early entrance. However, we do have a early entrance for students that are not five by August 1st and that's if our students have a waiver if they turn five by September 1st. And we've been doing that in Carmel for quite a few years now. I think my daughter's class was the first class and she graduated in 2013. So, it's been a long time since we, when we moved it to the September 1st for that waiver, that automatic waiver. And so, this policy is going back explaining that it will continue to follow the law. And then, also, we, we just cleaned up the wording as far as we do have students that may enroll in first grade at six years old, however, they may have not have had a kindergarten experience. And so, we do have administrative guidelines of assessments that we do for our students to determine what is the very best placement for that child.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Bannenberg?
I do have a question. So, this upcoming year, legislature, they've changed it to September 1st. The following year, it's going to be October 1st.
Well, they're...
So, how does that work? It seems like an awful young student to be thrown in with. I don't, it seems like you could almost have a two-year age difference between your oldest and your youngest enrolling.
Well, that's a, that's a very good point. It's a, it's a misunderstanding. The legislature did not change the enrollment date. The enrollment date is August 1st. However, what they changed is if you enroll this year and you're not five until September 1st, you still, the school district can still receive funding. And then, next year, if there's districts that have an early entrance that does extend beyond that September 1st to that October 1st, you could still receive ADM funding. However, our, our waiver policy stops at September 1st.
Okay, so, it's not required, it's just an option?
Correct. It's that you can receive funding. It's not an option to, you still have to be August 1st, but it's an option for early entrance.
Okay, okay.
Anything further? Dr. Dudley, materials adoption?
Okay, so, I have for discussion, some additional materials adoption. The main piece of this is our health and wellness materials. We did a program evaluation with a committee made up of teachers, of parents, of administrators to really look at the new standards in health and wellness and looking at new materials in both high school and middle school. And as you may recall, middle school is a wellness, which is a combined health and PE class and it's one of our core classes. Our students have wellness each day or every other day within the block and it's one, it's on their core courses. And so, they reviewed a variety of different materials and shows those materials that are on here for our wellness classes at our middle school, our health classes, also interpersonal relations, which is actually taught in our family consumer science. That is, we have a waiver that our students can receive their health credit. And so, they do use those same materials in interpersonal relations. So, those materials are on here as well, as well as Sports Medicine 1 and Sports Medicine 2. So, these are, be new materials. And then, the other pieces on here, we have a change in a consumable materials that we use for our Accounting 1 class. And as you may recall, earlier this year in one of our workshop sessions, Amanda Hoagland was here and she was talking about changes in what the workforce looks like. And she was talking about her sister, who is an accountant, who uses online technology. This is an online subscription that our students will have the opportunity to use materials that are more akin to what they would do in the real world. So, it really does give them then that 21st century learning. And so, we will drop off, this was a consumable, so we'll drop off the other consumable paper pencil piece that we had. And then, the other piece is we, back in October, you approved a change. In the past, we had an English 9 Geography and the History of the World course that was a block course. We changed that. We dropped the Geography and History of the World and it's an English 9 World History block course. And because of the world history changing, there were some changes in the English consumable text that the students would use. So, these would be consumable texts that the students would use and we drop off the ones that they are currently using in that block class.
Any questions for Dr. Dudley? Ms. Nouse?
Yes, when it comes down to something like, excuse me, sports medicine or the accounting, do the guidance counselors get involved with the students to find out if that's an interest that they want to pursue and guide those students into those classes? Or are these introductory courses to that particular thing and to help students understand what sports medicine is and, you know, maybe move into that program?
Sure. And it would be a combination between the guidance counselors, also the teachers that teach these courses where they might have, for example, in sports medicine, they might have this teacher in health or this teacher in PE where they talk about, here are the other courses that you might want to take in the health world. And so, all of our elective teachers share that information with our students in a variety of ways to help them to know what, what are, what's available. And then, also, what is, what there might be interest. So, it's a combination from guidance counselors as well as the teachers that teach it. And fortunately, our students have a variety of different electives to choose from. And so, what our elective departments have done is they really need to market their courses and help the students to understand because that's how they, you know, continue to grow in, in the department. It makes it very difficult when a department's shrinking. So, they get out there and they, they make sure that they're marketing what those courses entail and why students might be interested in taking those.
And also, would they get any college credits for these or is there anything that they can do to, to pass this along so they can use these in college or...
So, for the, the courses on here, no. We, we do have a variety of dual credit courses that our students have the opportunity to receive, dual credit through either, a variety of schools. We have IB Tech dual credit courses. We also have IU through our ACP, our Advanced College Project courses. We have a variety of AP... We have a variety of AP and IB. When they take the corresponding assessment and they score high enough, they can receive college credit through that. We also have some college credit through Butler, through our Educational Professionals courses, which is a new one from the last couple of years. And then we have an astronomy college course, I believe, through Purdue University. So we have a variety of, none of these courses are necessarily college credit, but we do have an extensive list of dual credit courses that our students can participate in.
Any further questions? Thank you, Dr. Dudley.
Thank you.
We will now move on to our report section with the monthly financial update with Mr. Roger McMichael.
Thank you. Okay, so we're through April with regard to our new education fund and our referendum funds. We're really on track with what we would be projecting. You'll notice that the cash balance in these funds continues to decline. That's because the referendum funds, as the board is aware, are received primarily from local property taxes. And so we're spending the money very regularly every two weeks for, because about 96% of these expenses are for payroll and benefits, and so that's a very regular expense every two weeks. But, you know, over $18 million of our revenue, we've not received any of that yet, but we will when taxes are paid in May and then in June. And so it's very typical that the balance in this fund, as well as the operation fund, will decline at the beginning of the year, and then we'll go back up by mid-year, and then we'll start that decline again until we get to December, when the second round of taxes are paid. I'd point out that you can see now that the ending balance for April is actually a negative of $265,000. And Mr. Kirchner had asked via email, he thought he understood that, but just to share it with you and the public. This is a book balance, not an actual cash balance for the whole school district. So we certainly have sufficient cash for all of our funds, but again, on the books, this fund would be in the red by that amount. And you'll see something similar with going on to the operations fund. In fact, it's almost $2.8 million in the red. And that's because that fund is entirely funded with local sources. And so as we're doing projects and expenditures from our operations fund, and you'll remember that that is everything previously would have been our capital projects fund and transportation fund and bus replacements. So as those expenses are all being made, particularly transportation, which again is majority of salary, there's no revenue coming in until the local revenue of primarily property tax is received in May and June. And so that fund will go back up as we approach the middle of the year. And so that's my report. And you also have comparisons to previous year, comparing the general fund from last year and the referendum fund, and then the three funds that now are folded into the new operations fund.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Nellis?
Yes, we're not having any problems meeting any of our expenses and meeting salaries and benefits yet at this point, right?
You mean from lack of cash?
Mm-hmm.
No, not at all. Our debt service fund, for example, we're permitted to carry for most of our debt, six months operating balance. And so we carry about $8 million over that in that fund. So just that fund alone easily has sufficient cash to support any other temporary deficits in these other funds.
Okay, another, one more question. I've noticed when we get to the federal funds, we have, the beginning balance was in the red.
Yes.
Is, are we receiving those on time? Are we getting those like we're supposed to?
We are, many of those are reimbursable funds, so we submit that to the state. But it's a common situation to have it first, to have the expense and thus the deficit, and then we submit for reimbursement.
Okay, because I noticed the ending balance is still in the red, so that's why I was asking.
Right. But it will eventually come into the black.
Okay.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you.
Dr. Beresford, superintendent's report?
There's been a lot going on. So it took me a little whittling to get this down to, so I wouldn't keep you here too late. But I am going to take you back to Prairie Trace on May the 4th. There was a really interesting kind of cultural event, and it was called the Guru Vandana, which was put on by the Hindu swamshivic saying there at Prairie Trace. And it was an amazing celebration. Guru Vandana means reverence for the teacher. And it's the Thanksgiving from a student to a teacher, expressing his or her gratitude. And the Guru Vandana program provides a platform for these students to honor their teachers for imparting knowledge and wisdom to them. So the guru is the teacher. And it was just a beautiful, with Hindu dress and a lot of information, just learning about India and the different areas of that country. And then it was kind of a touching ceremony. The students picked their teachers, and then the ceremony was that the student would bless the teacher, and then the teacher would bless the student by pouring rice on their head. And it was very colorful, a lot of music and dancing, and it finished up with a, like a typical or a celebratory Hindu dinner. And so it was really, really fascinating. And people from Hamilton South Eastern Schools and Carmel Clay Schools and some other schools, I mean, private schools, where the students picked their teachers, were all invited. And it was just really interesting and neat and artistic. And I think that idea of sharing cultures is really important. And the value that the Hindu culture puts on teachers is, one of the men told me that it was God, family, and teachers. And so they really did show a lot of love for the teachers, which was really great. And that was the kickoff to Teacher Appreciation Week, which was great. Also, I had a chance to roll over by Clay Middle School on one of my pinball nights. I call them pinball when I go from event to event to event. And they had their annual dance marathon for a couple, it was about two weeks ago. They broke a state and national record for raising $9,580 for Riley's Children's Hospital. A neat thing about that was the high school dance marathon. Kids came over and led the events, the different things that they did for that after-school program. So it was really, really neat to watch the leadership being developed, you know, in the high schoolers, and then they're working with the younger kids. And of course, the junior high kids just thought the high school kids were amazing, and it was special. Also, kudos to Roger and his team. Carmel Clay Schools Employee Wellness Center, alongside our healthcare partner, St. Vincent, received national recognition at the World Healthcare Congress Summit. And it was for our commitment to improving health outcomes, reducing healthcare costs, and providing innovative healthcare practices for our employees and families here in Carmel Clay. Carmel Clay Schools was the only school district in the country to get this recognition. The rest of them were all businesses and that sort of thing. So nice job, Mr. McMichael and your team, and all the work that we've done to expand wellness here in Carmel Clay Schools. It's being noticed. Also, I was able to go to the Carmel High School Philharmonic and Symphony Orchestra Concert, which was held at the Palladium. And what an amazing night that was. And Mrs. B. and I had great seats to watch the show. And one of the more touching moments in it was they played a song with a group that's called the CHS United Sound. And what that is, is it's musicians that work with disabled kids to be included in the music. So for that song, which was Somewhere Over the Rainbow, these wheelchairs, the kids rolled the wheelchairs in, and other kids with disabilities. And sometimes it was maybe three students, typical peers that were working with them, that held the, you know, like the violin or did the fingering for the violin while the student's able to pluck or push a bow. And they just really worked together so that those students could experience that music. And it was just fantastic. And Mrs. B. cried, not going to lie, but it was just a beautiful thing. And then, to top it off, Celine O., who's a cello player, came out in a white gown, and they did a musical piece called Kol Nadri. And it was the most beautiful thing I may have ever heard in orchestra setting. And the interplay between her solo and the orchestra just back and forth throughout that whole piece was just amazing. And to think she's a high school student, you just watch, remember that name, because you're going to see it at Carnegie Hall, I'm sure. Along that line, too, congratulations to Carmel High School Unified Track Team and the Boys Track Team, who both were named in 2019 MIC Champions. And as you know, the Unified Track Team is another IHSA-sponsored, where students with disabilities are paired with typical peers, and they compete in track and field events. And they compete hard, and our team's doing pretty darn well. I'm proud of those kids. Also, the Boys Track Team won the sectional, which was scheduled on the night of the big storm and the blackout. And then they all came back on Friday, and the hounds came out on top. So proud of those guys. Our CHS Science Bowl team placed fifth in the nation at the National Science Bowl in Washington, DC. And that team was, of course, impressive and top five in the nation. And in particular, one of the members of that team is Carmel High School's Kevin Liu, who earned a spot on the U.S. Physics Team. So he's now one of the 10 team members, so he's one of the top 10 kids in the nation that are on this team, and from all across the United States. And he's going to attend training camp this summer at the University of Maryland, with hopes to become one of the five members who get to compete in the international physics competition to be held in Israel this coming year. So real proud of Kevin and that whole team, and just doing amazing things in science for us. Just a reminder, the Pack the Cruiser event is going to be on June 1st from 10 to 2 at two crazy locations, Range Line Road, which is where I'll be. If you want to drop by your food, I'll be glad to take it. I'll be working that day. And then another location on Michigan, and the partnership between the Youth Assistance Program here in Carmel Police Department, they're working very closely together in order to provide meals this summer for kids that are in need, kids and families that are in need with food insecurity. So the program will provide an assortment of nutritious ingredients, make each child five healthy breakfasts and lunches for each of the 11 weeks of summer break. So I really want to encourage the whole community to get involved with that. It's a real good thing and a great partnership. And then my bell ringer was what I would call my fantastic Friday. It was an amazing, amazing Friday. Because we started that morning with a retirement dinner, where we honored, you know, almost 20 retirees that have served Carmel Clay Schools for years and years. I think the total number of years of experience were like 757 years of experience. And I calculated that they had made contact with students, with almost 2 million students over the years of their careers. When you think about the individual impact a teacher can make over their career, it's, the numbers are huge. And so yeah, it was a pretty special way to start the day. And then I had, after a couple of meetings, I zipped over to, where was I at? Was it West Clay? I think it was at West Clay. Went to West Clay for Lemonade Day. And if you like really super sweet syrupy lemonade, it was incredible. And I'll just leave it at that. But there's a lot of very busy entrepreneurs raising money for all kinds of different nonprofits, and I'm still kind of a little hungover from that. Lemonade Day was amazing. And then I rolled on down 116th Street to roll into Woodbrook Elementary's Kindy 500. And I got to wave the flag with real 500 princesses, with the tiara and everything. And I watched 78 kindergarten students race around the track with hundreds, the entire school was cheering on the Kindys. It was the greatest spectacle in Kindy 500 racing, and it was one of the cutest things I've ever seen. And I don't know if you got to see the news, Channel 13 News, if you haven't seen the clip, you want to make sure you see that clip, because they interviewed some of the kindergarteners after the race, and there's a little boy who's holding his helmet, and he goes, "How fast are you going out there? Were you going as fast as, you know, as the Indy cars?" And he goes, "Ah, I was going really fast." And he just did us proud. So it was just a really, really cute, cute things. And we've got a lot going on. We've got seven student days left of the 2018-19 school year. It's been an amazing year, and we're looking forward to an amazing finish to that. And kudos to our team, all the teachers and the students, and I just couldn't be happier and prouder of the Carmel Clay Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Are there any board members' reports tonight? You're next. Legislative update? Okay. Go ahead, Mrs. Vanberg.
Certainly not me. Well, for our legislative update, we did have 52 new laws that were passed that pertain to either education, school governance, or child-related programs or services. And gosh, it'd be awfully boring if I went through each and every one. So I'm only going to highlight the ones that pertain to our legislative priorities. I just want to remind everybody that the legislative session did begin on January 3rd and concluded on April 24th. We were very fortunate to have a number of Carmel Clay administrators, as well as myself, speak on behalf of various laws and policies to help share our concerns, as well as just offer support for various areas. Dr. Beresford, David Woodward, Dr. Dudley, Mr. McMichael, Dr. Arthur, our counsel, Churchill, Turtle, and Antrim. We had Seamus and Dr. Beresford. Who else did we have down there? Andrew Manna, yes. Yes. And not only did we speak with our state legislators, we also spoke with the Indiana Department of Education. So there was a lot of legislation, as well as some different ideas that they are moving forward. They're providing some big guidance on a surprise that popped up. I think it took most of us by surprise, in House Bill 1002 in Career and Technical Education. There are new professional growth points that are required for our teachers who are renewing their license. The Indiana State Teachers Association, as well as the Indiana Department of Education, are providing guidance. And once we have some specific guidance moving forward, I know Dr. Beresford and his team are going to work with the CTA to help look for ways that we can help provide some of those opportunities. I did read on the Department of Education's website that they're also going to find opportunities throughout the state and list those on their website for our teachers as well. Like I said, that took all of us by surprise, and somehow, we didn't see that coming. So anybody who needs to renew, renew before July 1st, before that law goes in. So we have a regular legislative priorities. One was increased funding for K-12 students. And the House Bill 1001 did add almost, let's see, what do I have here? $763 million in new money over the biennium for our schools, which is about 2.5%, somewhere between 2 and 2.5% per year. And I know Mr. McMichael will be sharing that with us once he has some specific data that will tell us how that'll positively impact what we get to do here in our schools. The other of our eight priorities, enhancing teacher recruitment and retention programs, there were not a lot out there, but Senate Bill 606, teacher salaries. We have some changes in the requirements that are used or that we can use to increase teacher salaries with the percentages, and so we'll be working with that during negotiations. That'll be an opportunity for our team to help support our teachers. Two things that did not go through like we had really desired, and they were, one was pulled out at the last minute, the other one didn't really have much traction. The tax credits for public school foundations didn't really make much traction there. The tax deduction for textbooks and supplies, not much there. But the credit for our teachers, that was in there for quite some time until the very end, when they pulled out the credit that teachers could take on their taxes for personal expenses. That was very disappointing. We do have one big, I know we wanted to expand a criteria for safe haven grants, while that really wasn't there. What they did provide was Senate Bill 127, we can have a referendum for school safety. That levy will, we can use that for all sorts of safety purposes, up to 10% per $100 of assessed value. So that gives us some latitude. It does have an eight-year life cycle. And I will look to Dr. Beresford and his- And I will look to Dr. Beresford and his team on recommendations, if that's an area that we'd want to pursue for SROs, for mental health counselors. But that would, that gives us some latitude. We also have Senate Bill 325 that came through, the Student Mental Health Bill, and that adds additional purposes that we can use for matching grants. And, oh, and of course, a kindergarten cutoff date. Yes, and that was in House Bill 1,001. That's part of a budgeting thing. So that's what I have for us today. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Yes. Thank you for all your work this legislative session.
Thank you.
Our upcoming meetings on Monday is Memorial Day, so we hope everyone enjoys their day off. And on May 30th, in seven school days, is the last day for students, and that evening is graduation. Do you guys, how many, I'm asking, how many seniors do we have graduating? Do you have any idea?
I believe over 1,300.
1,300, sending off. 1,400? There's a lot of them. So we're very excited for them. On June 10th, we have our next school board workshop session, and on June 24th, our school board regular session. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second? All those in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.